David Salcedo, the motion passed 3-2 with councilmember Monica Garcia, myself, Mayor Manuel Lozano opposing and the individuals that voted to terminate him with Vice Mayor, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco and also Councilmember Cruz Baca and Vice Mayor Susan Rubio. Let me just, and I know that Doug Parnell is the interim chief, let me just make a, for the record, I'm extremely disappointed with the decision that was made here tonight. This is an individual that I think became too popular too fast for some of my colleagues and that's unfortunate. He's a 27-year veteran originally hired in 1989 by the city of South Pasadena. 1992 was hired by the city of Inglewood where he served as the sergeant and lieutenant and captain. And it is disappointing for me and I made it very clear in closed session, this is the second Latino that has been terminated in such a cause. We do have the first Latina, another excellent and very well-liked police chief that was terminated for no cause and we are facing a lawsuit that may literally reach the million-dollar mark. And as I mentioned there as well, that I stood in regards to several officers, a total of seven, who had stated they have been discriminated as far as promotion, these are Latinos and it's unacceptable to me. I grew up and the way I was brought up that you don't look at the color of the individual, you look at the context and work together. And that's unfortunate. These individuals will come forward and I will support them and stand with them because we need to make certain that the city of Ballin Park is operating above board. My plan at this point is to look possibly at the Attorney General's office from the state of California to conduct an investigation. I cannot sell my city in this type of way. It is unacceptable for me and I think that it also is not fair for the troops that represent the city of Ballin Park. And I just want to set that for the record. Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you. I also want to express my disappointment and, you know, a few years ago, we, as a city, dismissed a Latina who brought a lawsuit against us. That decision was made by Ricardo Pacheco, Susan Rubio and Cruz Baca and I opposed it along with Mayor Lozano. As a result of that, we are facing a million-dollar lawsuit and our, this has been going on for nearly four years. Now we've, in closed session, taken up the item to dismiss this chief, Chief David Salcedo, who by the way was the second highest recommended amongst our internal staff and the panel consisted of our CEO and our executive team. He was the second highest and somebody else that was the top priority, we all agreed, was not, you know, the right fit for our community for a number of reasons. So our, this new chief, David Salcedo, came in, he hit the ground running, he interacted with the community, he took an assessment of our police department and was very respectful, I think, internally and externally while at the same time recognizing that there are challenges and that there, it is highly fragmented. When I say that, I say it with the knowledge that some of our police officers have expressed to us that they were bypassed by, in a promotion. And that's a real concern and it seems like those concerns are only perpetuated by the actions taken today. And I just want to say that in the case with Lily Hadso, you know, I became passive about standing up for what I believed to be true. But in this case, I won't do that. And I think it's very important for me to communicate, you know, my position, that if there are concerns within our police department that are brought up and that may, you know, may become a legal challenge, I'm going to stand with, you know, what I believe is right. And I don't think that dismissing our chief because he was trying to do what was right, I don't think that that was the right decision. And I will stand and I'm putting everybody on advisement that I will stand for that this time around. So this is a community that represents the majority of Latinos and I don't want to make it a race issue, but I also believe that we need to be inclusive at all levels of our government and we need to give people the opportunity and we also need to give our residents the opportunity to really connect with our police department. And so I feel like that was happening, but now it's been taken away. This is no, nothing against, you know, those who have served in the police department and I want to thank you. I know Bartolotti, you know, you served, I believe Parnell is now going to be the chief. But I do want to also acknowledge that there have been community members who have come up and said, you know what, I feel connected to the police department, I'm really glad that the chief is out there, he's making the connection with our community. These are, these are statements that have been made, in fact, they were made in closed session or, you know, in the public speaking earlier. And I would just ask that whoever is leading this police department, take that into consideration, learn from even the four weeks that we, you know, that we had with Chief David Salcedo. But I just want to state that for the record, I opposed his dismissal and I will continue to speak out, you know, based on the decision that was made today. And, you know, at that point, Mayor.
Yeah, and I just want to say, just so that the audience know, several of those Latinos were told not to apply. These were college graduates who had college degrees, they were told, I don't want you to apply for the next position, which was lieutenant. And that's unacceptable. I don't care about the color, but it's unacceptable for anyone to do that. And I will not stand as the mayor of the city of Ballin Park and allow something like that to occur. No one should regardless. We're all Americans and that's what makes this country so strong. But I'm extremely disappointed and I want to first of all apologize in advance that I am walking out at this point as a protest for the firing of a person who became too popular too fast. Thank you and I'm very sorry.
And I also want to state that, you know, I am going to be leaving this council meeting and it's simply to just be very clear about my position tonight. Again, several years ago, several years ago, I became passive in the Lily Hadso case and that case involves allegations of sexual harassment and it involves, you know, it involves some of the people who are clapping here tonight, but I just want to be really clear that I will be standing up for, you know, the integrity of the decision and my position that I took today and that was to oppose the dismissal of this chief without merit, without discussing any concerns, without knowing why this chief was hired about five weeks ago and now laid off. Clearly it's political. So with that, have a good night, everybody.
So you're done reporting?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Mayor Lozano already reported out.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to allow Madam City Clerk, can you please take role?
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here. As noted, we will excuse her.
Present?
Present. We will also excuse him. So at this point, I would like to open the council meeting, regular meeting, April 19th and it's 7:15 and we will start with, give me one second. Okay, as stated by law, I have to make an announcement. This is to announce, as required by government code section 54952, members of the city council, also members of the board directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. With that, we would like to move to our presentations and we would start with.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, if you could please do the invocation, Pastor Jackson's here, if you would follow that and also the pledge of allegiance after.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Pastor Jackson, please, will you do that's the honor? Thank you.
Father, we come before you humbly in the name of the Lord, giving you praise, glory, honor and thanksgiving. We know according to your word many plans in a man's heart, but only that that you have established will stand. A house divided cannot stand. Lord, I pray that this city council meeting will come together in unity, police department in unity and one accord. I pray, Father God, for our city, Lord God, I pray for our businesses, Lord, that they will prosper, Lord God, our schools, Lord God, that the teachers will educate our children, Lord God, and promote them to go on to higher education, Father God, that some of the kids will be upon the city council as well, Father. We pray in this city, Lord God, to tear down the drug problem and the gang problem. Father, we thank you, Lord God, cover us, we don't know what's going to happen from one day to the next day, whether we're going to be at war, whether we're going to be at peace, but we're asking you for your mighty hand to cover this place, Lord God, and protect us. In the name of the Lord Jesus, we pray, amen.
Please, those all that can, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, just very briefly, you know, I want to address some of the comments that were made and I'm really sorry for our community members, we never want to see our community divided in this manner and we apologize, it's not always pleasant to be on the other side just, you know, experiencing what we're dealing with, but I do want to just make three points. One, there have been 10, a total of 10 white chiefs of police also dismissed. Two, we normally don't show things that are in closed session, but Councilmember Monica Garcia shared the scoring of Mr. Salcedo based on our staff, but she failed to mention there was also a second panel. The second panel was comprised of chiefs of police from all over LA County, these are chiefs that have been around for many, many years with a lot of experience and they had completely, totally opposite scoring. And so with that, I would also like to make one comment that really just, really didn't sit well with me. Before we even had a discussion, before we even voted, before we even opened up the meeting, I was told that if, by Councilmember Monica Garcia, that if I voted against him, they were going to file a lawsuit and asked me to reconsider. She said, do you really want the senate? Because if you want the senate, don't vote that way. And I told her that I don't make decisions for my community based on threats, I really do it because I believe in the community and I'm not going to be deterred. She threatened to, well, not her, with a group of people, file a lawsuit and accuse me of being anti-women and anti-Latino and discriminating just to ruin my senate race. With that, I will move to the presentations. Thank you. Okay, I would like to ask Mr. Phil Hawke.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, I just want to say, because I'm always proud of everything our community does and I don't know if anyone is aware that at Vineland School, we had two young people that won the History Day competition and they will be going on to state on May 6th and 7th, but they are Silence Jackson and Ria Santos and congratulations to them and also to Principal Rodriguez, Dr. Rodriguez.
Okay, so next, we're, okay, we're going to move over to the presentation by Mr. Phil Hawke from the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Mr. Phil, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rubio and members of city council, my name is Phil Hawke, I'm the executive director of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. And let me say, I was in city management for 26 years and I've been to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of city council meetings. I know this is a tough meeting tonight, but I'm also here to tell you that Ballin Park is an exemplary city, that Ballin Park is an important part of the San Gabriel Valley and Ballin Park has had considerable success as a city. Those of you who've lived here for a long time and people in the audience know the difference in Ballin Park over the past 50 years. And the role of Ballin Park in the region, in the San Gabriel Valley is one is of prominence. Let me say also that Councilmember Garcia is the new delegate to the Council of Governments, we have a meeting tomorrow night. Cruz Baca is the alternate to the Council of Governments. And a lot of good things are happening in the Council of Governments in part because of the leadership of members of the city council and your city manager in making good things happen. I should also say that Councilmember Baca is on the committee to study the future of the Alameda Corridor East construction project, which I'll touch on in just a moment. Before I get into the presentation and let me make sure everybody in the audience understands where the San Gabriel Valley is and, you know, the logo of the city is the hub of the San Gabriel Valley and certainly in the center of the San Gabriel Valley. And much of the activity, I have a long list here, I tried to pull together all the good things that have happened through Ballin Park being a part of the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments and I can go down a whole list of highway projects, bikeway projects, traffic signal projects, greenways that are under development and so forth. So it's been very successful from our venue's point. And briefly, I just wanted to highlight, since you're a member of the Council of Governments, there are 35 members. 35 members is made up of 31 cities, three water districts and three county supervisors. And there's somebody in the audience that says that doesn't add up to 35 because the three water districts have one vote. But you can see the list of all the members. A subsidiary of the Council of Governments is the Alameda Corridor East Construction Authority and many of you are familiar with important project, you see on the screen the green area that is the corridor where we call it ACE. ACE has been working for the past 17 years to build great separations with considerable success. It's a national model, it has received $1.6 billion in funding and ACE is scheduled to expire in six years. Their mission will be completed, they had 59 projects that they had scoped out and those will be nearing completion. And so we do have a study underway to talk about what's the future of the Alameda Corridor East project and staff and success, how do we take advantage of it for the San Gabriel Valley. And a proposal is on the table to expand this ACE project, so it has San Gabriel Valley wide jurisdiction to do projects in Ballin Park or anywhere else in the San Gabriel Valley and particularly with the passage of Measure M and SB 1, there is a lot of transportation money, but this is the kind of construction authority that could do any other capital project in the San Gabriel Valley. This all is coming through the committee that Councilmember Baca's on and that'll be voted on by the Council of Governments by July. It'll make a big difference in the operation of the COG, the council, operation of the Council of Governments and the ability to, for Ballin Park to do projects. Real quick, these are the priority areas that we focus on in the Council of Governments. Of course, transportation is important, that includes active transportation like bikeways, but also stormwater, stormwater is a really big issue. For San Gabriel Valley, it's a $6 billion issue, for Los Angeles County, it's a $20 billion issue. I think the number for Ballin Park is $194 million to do construction to comply with the federal and state requirements. We're involved in homelessness, Measure H, as you know, is very much in the forefront and we're working to get an allocation of those funds to the San Gabriel Valley. This is a whole list of a lot of good things that are going on. Couple of things I'll mention, community choice energy, if you saw the Los Angeles Times today, the lead article on the front page was about the supervisors created what they called a utility, it is really in this category of community choice energy that allows a community like Ballin Park to be a part of a joint powers authority and buy energy through lower cost and more environmentally efficient ways and lower the cost of energy to your businesses and residents. Shannon has been an active leader in evaluating that option. And the last one here is this pursue the review of ACE COG. In my business, we deal with a lot of acronyms, so I apologize to the audience. And this is the key issue. It's an important issue for Ballin Park, Councilmember Baca is actively involved with that. If it goes forward, if it's approved by the governing board of the Council of Governments in July, it'll come back to you. Because we have to amend the joint powers authority, it'll come back to the Ballin Park City Council to approve an amendment to the joint powers authority. So thank you for your leadership with the COG, your involvement with COG and the leadership of Ballin Park in the San Gabriel Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hawke, thank you for what you do. I know a lot of people don't realize all the work that you guys do behind the scenes and there's a lot of committees and everyone belongs to one, I know Councilmember Cruz Baca belongs to the ACE, I believe, the homelessness and not everyone has that ability, you know, some of us have full-time jobs, so thank you to those that do the morning work because it's not always possible, but once again, thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Vice Mayor, I'd like to thank Mr. Hawke as well, yeah, I know, I'm able, my schedule is very flexible, so I'm able to sit fortunately in a lot of those committees and represent my fellow council members. But thank you so very much and everyone at the COG that does such a great job and like I said the other day when I saw you at the partnership event, I've learned a lot in the last year that I've been on the COG, so thank you so very much.
Well, I might tell the audience also that Councilmember Rubio has been active on our transportation committee, which has made some big decisions and Councilmember Baca has been active in our homelessness committee, very important issues for all of us. Thank you.
I want to thank you also for the work that you've done on the COGS for our community, especially with the energy for our community, solar is becoming a very new incentive for a lot of our community to get involved in and now that you're a part of that solution, I'm glad to see that you're working on that for our communities. Thank you.
Good, I'm happy to hear you mention that because we're deep into that and your city manager has become a leader of that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you and don't forget to reach out, whatever we can do, because I know we believe in the work that you do. Thank you. So next, we would like to make the presentation, is there anybody here for the Arbor Day proclamation? I'm going to allow my council colleague Cruz Baca to go ahead and read it and we'll make sure that.
Oh, the commissioners are here.
Oh, the commissioners, please, thank you.
And while they walk up here, I will read that Arbor Day is April the 28th, 2017 and it's a proclamation from the city of Ballin Park and it says, "In 1872, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that its special day be set aside for the plant of trees and the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewable resource, giving us a paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal." Now therefore, Mayor Lozano, the city of Ballin Park, along with Mayor Protem, Susan Rubio, councilmembers Cruz Baca, myself, Monica Garcia, Ricardo Pacheco, City Treasurer Maria Contreras and City Clerk Alejandra Abla do hereby proclaim, April 28th is Arbor Day in the city of Ballin Park and urge all citizens to celebrate and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, all citizens are urged to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And Ballin Park will be celebrating this Saturday, our Arbor Day, so all of you are welcome, but thank you very much.
The park and recreation committee, commission, oh, how did it turn you on? We work with the parks and recreation and we are involved in helping to plan things and do things with the community. We are volunteers and we love doing what we do. This is the group that I work with.
Manny, they want a picture with you. Sam, Sam, do you mind taking the picture so Manny can join us? Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I guess we should have Manny hold it. Yeah, where's Manny?
Manny and Sam.
Yes, we want you to hold this. Do you do all the extra hard work?
Just point and shoot.
Point and shoot? That doesn't sound too good.
Just like to invite the community out to Saturday's event, which is our Arbor Day and environmental fair. We have free mulch and we have activities for the children as well as we are dedicating two trees to two wonderful community members. Thank you, hope to see everyone on Saturday. Thank you.
And just so the community knows, we're, right now, we're currently changing all the medians and we're very active in making sure that Ballin Park is a little greener and of course collectively as a council, we all believe in cleaner air and a cleaner city, so thank you for all that you do, we really appreciate it. Also Manny, please thank your staff, they had the Easter hunt this weekend, it was a big success and thank you to all the community members that joined us, we really appreciate it. Next, I would like to invite Federico Viscara Corillo along with Mr. Mojica, is Mr. Mojica here? Thought I saw him. Now he is.
Federico is a three-time Olympic champ.
Really quickly, I'm going to read his bio as he comes up, up here. Federico is a three-time Olympian, he won in 1984 Los Angeles Olympics, 1988 Seoul Olympics, 1992 Barcelona Olympics. Federico is the most decorated accomplished judo participant representing Mexico. Third place in 1984 Pan-American Judo Championship in Mexico City. Second place in 1985 Pan-American Judo Championships in Havana, Cuba. Fifth place in 1986 in Japan Junior Championship and Kobe Japan. Third place in 1986 Central American Games Santiago de los Cabos Dominican Republican. Third place in 1984, 1985, 1987, 1988, 1990 US Open Championships in Colorado. Second place in 1988 Pan-American Judo Championships, Buenos Aires, Argentina. And second place in 1990 Pan-American Judo Championships, Caracas, Venezuela. Wow, he's been all over the map, let's give him a big round of applause. And of course, Mr. Mojica, thank you so much, he runs a great program and he's always so engaged with our community and our kids, of course, we always want to make sure they have a place to go and they really do take care of them, so thank you, let's give him a big round of applause as well. We also have a couple of friends as well, right? I want to introduce, you want to introduce the rest of the kids?
I'd like to introduce, this is Rafael Juan Pablo. Okay, why don't you guys introduce yourself? You guys speak good English. Say yourself.
My name is Juan Pablo and I am 11 years old.
What color now? Tell him about what you do.
And I am, and I am blue belt. And I am, and I am Blue Belt.
My name is Rafael. I'm eight years old, and I am Blue Belt.
My name is Jose Antonio, and I'm 14 years old, and I'm Blue Belt, too.
Well, you want me, just for the record, I have all their names here. Just want to make sure that we have them. And we're also going to take a picture of them and put them on the now so they can be recognized as well. We have Tobias Barcerna, Maximiliano Barcerna, Jose Antonio Ramirez, Juan Pablo Ramirez, and Rafael Ramirez. So, thank you so much for joining us. Again, let's give them a big round of applause.
I'd like to introduce Toby and Max. These players here come from Puebla. They come from Puebla, Mexico, and Federico is the head coach for Mexico. And he's done a lot, I can't, he's done so much to help a lot of kids. Okay, all right. So, I want to introduce Toby and Max. They've been doing judo for almost a year and a half, and their goal is to go to the Special Olympics, and they have judo in the Special Olympics. So, they're trying their best. And like I said, I don't think when people say they can't do things, I just can't accept that. Toby and Max is... Thank you. And the mayor, thank you. And my boss, Manny Carillo, thank you again.
In the time that they've been taking judo, they have grown tremendously. And really and truly, it has done so much for them. And also congratulate the parents that I know.
We love their enthusiasm, of course. Thank you. As you can tell, they're so confident. I think that's what Mr. Mojica, you know, strives to do, give them confidence and make sure that they are always included in whatever we do. I think we're going to have to buy him a mic to take home, right? Thank you so much. Let's give them a big round of applause as they're working out. I love to see how excited they are. So, at this point, I would like to open public communication. Anyone that wishes to speak, do so. We have exactly three minutes.
My name is Mark Shinfield. I don't know if you guys all know me, but I am a longtime resident of Baldwin Park. First of all, I want to thank all you men in blue. I respect you, hardline law enforcement. Without you people, this place would be chaos. I am very disappointed, very disappointed in the decision that was made. I believe no one should be terminated without given a chance. This man was not given a fair chance. How do you expect to run a city right without giving a chance? You guys in the blue, you guys put up your lives for us. You guys do a lot for us. I know my dad was a retired police captain for 37 years for Manhattan. I know what it's like. It's not easy. Please, that's all I ask. I don't care what color you are. It don't have to be racism whatsoever. Give a person a chance. Be fair. I mean, this man wasn't even, what, a couple weeks? Come on now. I mean, I want an answer. Where was he terminated? Why was this man terminated? It's not right. It's not right at all. Something's wrong here. Now, this is not right, because the city should be going up. I see it's going down now. Something should be done right. Can I get an answer, please?
I'm sorry, at this time, because it's a personal matter, we're not at liberty to discuss, but we hear your concerns, and thank you for speaking here today. We appreciate it.
It's horrible.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Hello, city council, residents of Baldwin Park. Thank you. The Tribune printed, "The city owes $300,000 to $400,000 in debt for outside attorney bills." That doesn't include the city fees that our city lawyer hands to the city. They get larger and larger, close to a half a million dollars. I thought a city lawyer is supposed to work on what we pay him, but I guess I was wrong. The city spent $52,000 for city expenses for the city to file a bogus restraining order on a person named Mr. Tullis. We got to stop all these lawsuits and start running the city more better, more efficient. Losing, okay. Mr. Cook, another lawyer, 70 grand. Don't we get tired of paying these lawsuits? Looks like we're the city of Los Angeles paying out more lawsuits than we do take The thing that gets most people in this city is why are we paying so many lawsuits? This is ridiculous, folks. You people work for all of us, and so far, you don't. The two people that left, you can tell they don't work for the city. They work for themselves, it seems. Means if they left, you people ought to let them resign. Tell them goodbye, good riddance, go to another city and tear it apart, and then tell us how great you are. You guys spend a lot of money, and I keep telling you, all the times I've been here, where is all this money coming from? You have never told anybody in this residence, or including you folks, where this money comes from. Bed tax doesn't cover millions and millions of dollars. I know you people think so, it doesn't. It is time that you city council get together and run this city like it should be run. You step in the right direction, and then you back up. You can't back up. You have to keep going forward, make it progress. You have city ordinance you don't even enforce. A gentleman stood in front of my house, city ordinance person, and just looked at my house, and there's violations. Everywhere he looked, there's violations. You guys didn't do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Anybody else wishing to speak?
One of the things I was just wondering on the code enforcers, the way we have it, it's been running beautifully. I don't know when we had it with Manny and Mark, you know, it really wasn't making no revenue for the city. I don't know where we thinking of going back, the code enforcers back to where they were. It's a very unwise, you know, like, why ruin a good thing when you have it going right? And I see that it was reported, being reported to the police department, which is good. They have the background to call in, and the police would arrive to where they're at or having problems, okay? One of the things that I, with Mr. Lozano, Mrs. Garcia, calling people racist, I don't think so. All the chiefs and all the police force that I deal with, they're not racist. If you don't have the background or something right there, why should the mayor or Mrs. Garcia say they're racist? They're not racist, the people. If you're not being promoted, it's because of your own fault. Your education is very important. Everybody that I've talked to in the police force, they have good educations, you know? We're not talking with masters. We're talking about people with doctors in their background, okay? But like I said, the code enforcers should stay where it is. It shouldn't be sent out someplace else. Okay? That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Greg Tuttle, business owner. First, I'd like to bring up the Fourth of July event. It seems it cost us almost as much within $1,000 of what we had when we had to do a panic buy to get into the Fourth of July last year because nobody made a decision until the last minute. So, we're within $1,000. I think something's wrong there with the bid. Also, the mosquito annexation thing, I see that it's not costing the taxpayers in their payments for their property any taxes. So, if that's true, maybe the city manager can bring us up to date on that because I think that's a great deal, whatever happened there. Because we were going to be charged $10 to $11 on that. And we already spent enough money with Sid Masavi's phony deals of bringing in all these people that didn't happen, and all the overcharge on, or having the ballot casting that wasn't even a tenth of the city people. Now, then, we go into the, I got a request in with the city, public's request, and it was for the business association monies and where the checks went for the business association. And it's really disturbing. I see a woman here, Arcelia Esperaz, $2,700. I see another payment to her for $1,800. This is a girl that writes letters that never get shown into the city papers or anything else. I want to know why we're paying this, and this is out of the business assessment. I want to know why we're paying consulting fees out of the business assessment that does nothing for the business assessment taxing. AIM Consulting's $800, $700. Then I see over here Cosment Associates, $1,600, $2,600. These are all fees that are totally illegitimate to be taken out of our business assessment. And I see this as being done tonight. We still don't have business owners that are on the board, that need to be on the board and control these expenditures that are going out. Because it's bogus what's going out, you're not, you don't have enough money into the general fund, so you suck it out of the business assessment tax fund. This has to be stopped, and we need business owners in there to help regulate it. Having city officials in there regulating it only sucks the money back out of here. We're paying already for the now, which you don't reimburse us when you get money, advertising money, from the people that advertise in and out. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, city council. My name is Abel. It was transmission. For 20 years, I live in Baldwin Park for almost 37 years. My question is this, why you are burning the business too much? I want to know why. You don't let me to work good. I'm losing business too much since you started burning my business. Why you do that to us? Let me work good, don't bother me. You know, that got stolen a few times in one month, and I don't know why you are trying to burn, burn, burn me every day. We're doing something for the business. Don't bother the business. We produce money for you, for the city. Why you do that to us? I want to know why, and still you want me to demo my back building. Why you do that to us? Okay, remember, we are living in Baldwin Park for many years, we never got problems. I don't know who's causing this problem. I want to know who's doing it. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Abel. And I know you've had some concerns, and Shannon, I'll just ask that you reach out to him and make sure that we know what his concerns are, and we try to address them. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, now, sure.
My name's Hector. I'm a parishioner at St. John's. A lot of you guys know me by working with all of you guys on certain projects in the community to better our community. And I think a lot of you honestly do have the community's best interest in heart, and I see that, I see that in the things, the unspoken things that you guys do, that you guys don't flaunt around and people in the community don't get to see unless they're directly affected by it, and that's why you guys have a lot of support. One thing that I'm really upset that I'm here for is there's a lot of negativity going around with the community and police officers in general. You know, there's a lot of mistrust and a lot of things that a lot of people just don't trust cops nowadays for whatever reason. As an activist, I try to change that and try to show people the good side to police officers. And some people see it, some people don't. And, you know, I'm really upset at the firing of the police chief. He, I don't know what the circumstances are, and I'm sure you guys are smart, you guys have your reasons, which might be known later, which I hope they are. I hope, I think the community does deserve an explanation for this because, you know, Chief Salcedo seemed like a really good guy. He was really active. He was there shaking hands, getting to know people. He was there at mass, you know, introducing himself to people. He was making our community feel secure. He was making people feel that, hey, it's okay to reach out. Here I am, I'm the chief. I'm the top cop here in Baldwin Park, and you can talk to me if you have any issues, concerns, which he addressed a couple of mine. Worked with me on an issue that were, not on an issue, on a project that we're working on right now. And it's just very upsetting that, for whatever reason, you guys let him go. I hope that when you guys pick a new chief, that his hat gets thrown in so you guys can reassess him and see the good work that he's been doing, the community outreach that he's been doing, and the bond in the short four weeks that he's been here, to really look at that, you know? And I hope that we can all work together. I'm upset, but I'm not mad at any of you guys. I don't hold any grudges. I respect all your decisions and everything. And a lot of the times when I try to defend you guys on social media, a lot of people say that, that it's because they voted this way, this team voted that way. We're all one team, and we all should be working together towards the future and the better of Baldwin Park. And I hope that we can put all of our differences aside, even the ones that you guys have up in the city council, and work together to make a better Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector, and thank you for what you're doing in the community. We do appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? I now declare the public communication closed. Any council members?
Yes, Vice Mayor, if I may say a few words in regards to some of the comments that were made here today. You know, I know that the dismissal of the chief, it's difficult. And it's difficult for some of us to respond because it is a closed session item, and we're not allowed to really discuss closed session issues. I know some council members that voted against it will say a lot of what you heard today. But I can assure you that I believe we have a good police department. We have a lot of officers that are of different ethnicities within our police department. We have, I looked at our sergeant's chart, and the ethnicity there is 50%. We have, I looked at our sergeant's chart and the ethnicity there is 50%. There's Latinos and Asians and then Anglos. But a lot of our officers that are coming in now because of the demographics, there's, there's a lot of Latino officers that are moving up. And I think that we could always look at improving our policies for hiring. And, you know, we're always ready to take recommendations from people to see what we could do to improve in those areas. But the decision that was made that I voted for, obviously, you know, I know a lot of times I'm accused of being along certain party lines, but as you can see, you know, I do what's in the best interest of the community. I don't align myself with a certain group. And in this case, because the items were in closed session, I can't really disclose my position on it. But I think we did the right decision at this point, and we're going to continue to look for a chief in the future. I also wanted to point out that a lot of the positive that the city's doing, we're continuing to work in public works with a lot of programs that are going on, especially along our main street on Ramona. We're doing our medium project that continues to close. I think it's going to close out, what, at the end of May or April? So it looks like it's moving forward. And I just wanted to also thank our staff. We had a wonderful Easter program which came, a lot of families came out and really supported and participated in our Easter program. And our Parks and Recreation Department did a wonderful job for all of that, so. With that, Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I just want to make another comment. I know that it's easy to make accusations here, and I just want to make it very clear. I know that we're not at liberty to respond. But I will say this, you know, if there's any doubt that the council values our police officers and that we really, you know, appreciate the work that they do, we only have to look back four years ago when the council majority at the time was voted to go sheriffs and they were going to dismantle the police department. We were ready to sell cars, we were ready to let go. I believe there was 70 to 80 police officers that would have lost their jobs. And if I remember correctly, it was the three council members up here that voted to overturn that decision because we wanted our police to stay and we were able to keep their jobs. Not only the police officers, but there's a lot of people behind the scenes like our records clerks. And again, I just want to stress that if anybody doubts that we value our police officers, just look back. We fought for an entire year to make sure we didn't go sheriffs. And we fought until we were able to keep them. And that's just a small way of showing them how much we appreciate them. It's always been a great department. We always value their work and we work together. You know, we have toy giveaways together and we do a lot of work together. So I hope people can separate the chief with the police department because I get calls all the time. We speak on a daily basis with all the police officers. We encourage them all the time to be engaged with our community, and they do it very well. And I hear from our communities, not just the chief, but the police officers. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we do value them. And secondly, I'm a little disappointed with the accusations of discrimination because every organization has a process. If anybody's being discriminated against, there's a process. You come forward and you make sure that it's on record. If you feel that you were passed over, then again, there's a process. And you go to whoever you need to go to and express your concerns, and let's make sure that we take care of it then. And also, right now, I'm hearing all this discrimination and there's seven people. And just for the record, we don't have anything, no documentation saying that this was happening. And so clearly, we are not going to condone that kind of behavior. And we've asked our legal counsel to look into it because we want to make sure everyone's protected. But again, I wish they would have came forward sooner and stated that they have concerns. But we've never heard that until now. And again, we want to make sure everyone knows that we value our employees. We want them to have a place to go if they're being discriminated against. And at this point, we, this is the first time we're hearing about it. So please, I hope we can separate the two. And to all of you police officers, just know that we really value your work. And right now, we can't really explain why we made the decision because it's closed session. But know that we do have the best interest of the community, our police officers, and everyone at home. Thank you. At this point.
Well, Vice Mayor?
Sure.
I just want to go ahead. Many of you that know, my decisions here in the short time in comparison to my colleagues in being on the council has always been because I make decisions based on what is the best thing for our community. It hasn't always been the popular vote. But I have always felt that I make decisions based on what's the best for our community and also for our employees. I want to thank our staff and especially our police department who, and I'm going to echo from what Vice Mayor Rubio said. I was in the trenches when the sheriffs were circling the wagons, in a sense. So I just want to say that I thank you so very much for everything you do. I think that all the programs that you have, the toys for the children at Christmas and how you're out there in the community and everything has meant a lot to a lot of the residents in Baldwin Park and of course, to us up here on the dais. But thank you so very much. To me, saying discrimination and throwing around racial remarks is very serious for me. I take that very seriously. Whether, whatever religious background, whatever the color of your skin is, I am a product of being out there in the 60s, and a lot of you know that, that I have fought for a lot of human rights. So I take that very, very serious to be told that this is going on within our community and within our employees. So please, I urge you, not only our police department, but any of our staff that feels that at any time there has been any discrimination in whatever it is, please, I urge you to come forward because we really need to look into that if that is the case. And thank you so very much for all the work you do.
If I can, Vice Mayor?
Sure.
I just also wanted to state that what was brought up in regard to the discrimination and that there was a lawsuit by a previous police chief. And just want to note that that lawsuit was not based on race discrimination. And so, you know, they're trying to say that, but that lawsuit was not based on that issue. And it's continuing, I think, to go to trial later on. But I also want to add that I believe our law firm, Defoea Garcia, has done a great job in keeping us out of lawsuits and minimizing lawsuits. There are some attorneys out there that continuously, one by the name of Attorney Cook, who files a number of lawsuits and keeps the city in court and in costs. And so the bills of lawsuits and what we have to pay for attorneys continues to build and bills and build up. And the city's been fortunate enough to win a number of those lawsuits, but it still costs us to defend those lawsuits. Those costs that we spend from our general fund to defend the city lawsuits could be used for our employees and other things in the city. But unfortunately, the city has to defend itself when these lawsuits come up, and we have to fight them. And luckily, because of the firm of Garcia and Defoea, they've been able to stop a lot of these lawsuits. So just wanted to bring that up. And Councilman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much. So at this point, we're going to go to consent calendars. Items 1 to 12. Anybody wishing to pull any items?
No. Motion to approve items 1 through 12?
Second.
No objections. So moved. Now, we would go, I would like to open up the hearing. A request for consideration of a municipal zoning code amendment that would allow modification of 1.53170, eliminating language to allow all new billboards to be no taller than 65 feet in height, regardless of proximity to a sound wall and development agreement, to allow the installation of one double-faced digital billboard located at 1919 Puente Avenue, applicant Becker Boards, small LLC, case number AZC 185 and DA 16-01. Anybody speaking in favor?
I'm here for the staff report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. The case before you is a request for consideration of a municipal zoning code amendment that would modify Section 153.170.105H, eliminating the language to allow all new billboards to be no taller than 65 feet in height, regardless of proximity to a sound wall, and a development agreement to allow the installation of one double-faced digital billboard. The location is 1919 Puente Avenue. The applicant is Becker Boards, small LLC. Case numbers AZC 185 and DA 1601. The applicant is requesting a code amendment to allow the construction of one double-faced digital billboard with a total height of 65 feet to be located at the existing laid law Harley-Davidson dealer's site. The site is zoned freeway commercial, and the surrounding property to the southeast and west is also zoned for commercial uses. The proposed digital billboard will be located at the northwest corner of the triangular-shaped property. If you can see this, it'll be right here, closest to the freeway. The design of the digital billboard has been tentatively approved by the design review committee, and the planning commission has adopted resolution to recommend the city council to approve the zoning code amendment and development agreement. The proposed design incorporates the Harley-Davidson color scheme, giving it a modern appearance. And the city's hub logo will be incorporated at the top tier of the pole, the single pole. To summarize the request, the proposed code amendment is to allow all billboards, both static and digital, to be constructed at a maximum height of 65 feet. No other changes to the code are proposed. The development agreement will allow the applicant to construct one digital billboard at 1919 Puente Avenue. As part of the agreement, the applicant will pay an annual development fee to the city, and the term of the agreement is for a 25-year term. Although the development agreement sets forth all the terms and conditions for this project, staff would like to make the city council aware that the proposed billboard is in proximity of another billboard that the city council approved through DA or Development Agreement 1501. As a result, staff worked with the applicant to add a condition of approval to the development agreement ordinance to read as follows. "The applicant shall submit a signed wet-stamped survey prepared by a licensed engineer identifying the distance between the proposed billboard structure at 14230 Delwood Street and 1919 Puente Avenue, which shall comply with the State of California Outdoor Advertising Act development standards, and the applicant agrees to their proposed sign at 1919 Puente Avenue will be built in conformance with the State of California Outdoor Advertising Act, including, but not limited to, being placed 500 feet or more from the proposed sign at 14230 Delwood, as previously approved per the Development Agreement 15-01 by Bulletin Displays LLC, subsequently approved by the city council on December 6, 2016." Staff and the planning commission recommends that the city council open the public hearing and, following the public hearing, adopt the following resolution and introduce the following ordinances. Adopt Resolution Number 2017-180, entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, recommending that the city council approve and adopt: 1. A mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact; 2. An amendment to the city's municipal code relating to development standards for billboard uses; and 3. A development agreement for the construction of a new digital billboard in 1919 Puente Avenue. The locations is citywide and 1919 Puente Avenue, APN 8558-033-005. The applicant Becker Boards, small LLC. Case numbers AZC 185 and DA 16-01." Number 2 is introduced for first reading by title only and waive further reading. Ordinance 1398, entitled "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, amending Section 153.170.105H" to the Baldwin Park Municipal Code relating to billboards. And number 3, introduced for first reading by title only and waive further reading. Ordinance 1399, entitled "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, authorizing the City of Baldwin Park to enter into a development agreement with Becker Boards, small LLC, for approval of a new digital billboard structure at the real property located at 1919 Puente Avenue along the I-10 freeway within the City of Baldwin Park." This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you so much. Is there any questions from the council to staff? Is there any, if there's no more questions, then is there anybody speaking in opposition of this? I'm sorry, in favor of this item? Anybody wishing to speak? You may do so at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph White. I'm one of the owners of Becker Boards. And I just want to say thank you to Amy in particular. She's been wonderful to work with, Shannon as well. I've worked with a lot of cities in my short career. And I will say Baldwin Park has been phenomenal to work with. Shannon has texted me on multiple occasions asking me to take care of things, making sure that I'm coming to the hearings and things like that. And that is just not what I'm accustomed to. So I just want to say thank you to your staff. They've been wonderful to work with and all of the council members too. I've met you guys personally, and I want to thank you for your time and everything that you guys have done to get us to this point. So thank you, guys, all.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, I will now declare that closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, so now we declare the public communication closed. Seeing no further speakers, I will now close the public hearing and ask for council deliberation. Any questions? Okay, so now I will just move forward, make the motion to Adopt Resolution Number 2017-180, entitled "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, recommending that the city council approve and adopt: 1. A mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact; 2. An amendment to the city's municipal code relating to development standards for billboard uses; 3. A development agreement for the construction of a new digital billboard at 1919 Puente Avenue. Location: citywide and 1919 Puente Avenue, APN 8558-033-005. Applicant Becker Boards, small LLC. Case number AZC 185 and DA 16-01. And introduced first reading by title only and waive further reading. Ordinance 1398, entitled "The ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, amending Section 153.170.105H" to the Baldwin Park Municipal Code relating to billboards. And 3. Introduced for first reading by title only and waive further reading. Ordinance 1399, entitled "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, authorizing the City of Baldwin Park to enter into a development agreement with Becker Boards, small LLC, for the approval of a new digital billboard structure at the real property located at 1919 Puente Avenue along the 10, I-10 freeway within the City of Baldwin Park." And with that motion?
Second.
Any objections? None. So moved. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And now for item number 14. I would like to make a motion to move this one over to the next council meeting. As there's a time.
No, we can do that, but it's been published. So we ask that you open the hearing and then continue it to the next meeting, and that way we do not have to republish it.
Okay. So at this time, at this time, I would like to open a public hearing on this agenda item. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Greg Tuttle, business owner. Like I had stated in my comments, now you want to raise 50% up on the taxes to the businesses on our assessment fee. Now, the business improvement tax budget only shows that you're going to do the Baldwin Park now, street fair, concerts in the park, Fourth of July, Home Hero Military Banner. But you neglect to bring in all the other itemized checks that we have here. Of all this expenditures, it's all bogus. It should be put into the general fund. So I certainly hope that we're going to have a definite expenditure of what you're really going to spend the money on because you're going to increase it 50% and you're going in here buying consultants. You're using people that, for sanitation, $2,400. Carnival services, $2,800. What we're actually doing is, is this a dumping place for you to suck money out of that is the businesses are paying for. And then you're going to increase our business license fee another 50%. You need to really think this hard over because the businesses are getting tired of getting taxed and not getting anything out of it. About the only thing the businesses really benefit out of this thing is the street fair. And that's because Maria Moreno does a fantastic job over there getting the people together, organizing it, and we bring people to the city. Concerts in the park don't bring people to spend money. But that street fair, it did. It generated a lot of revenue and brought people to the city. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any rebuttals? Mr. Luna.
City Council, Baldwin Park residents. My question is, they're going to put up this sign, it's going to be lit up day and night or whenever.
I'm sorry, Mr. Luna, that item has already been voted on.
Hold on, please.
Yeah, at this point, we can't go back.
I'm saying, I'm opposing to it because I'm going to pay for this.
Mr. Luna, I'm sorry, let me clarify. You know, the item that you're referring to is item 13, and it was already given an opportunity to speak for and against. was item 13, and it was already given an opportunity to speak for and against, and so the item has already been closed, I would love to give you that opportunity, but it's already been voted on, so now we're on item number 14, so at this point, you could only speak in favor or against item 14, which is the business improvement tax, so I apologize, thank you, Mr. Luna.
You don't want me to oppose to it?
You can at this time, because based on the agenda, it's already been voted on, so I'm so sorry, I wish I can give you the opportunity, but...
This is a public hearing.
Yes, but that item was already discussed.
But I'm part of the public.
No, no, I understand, Mr. Luna, but that was item 13. You can, but it was already noticed, and I already opened it up for discussion.
Well, I am, but you didn't let me finish.
Yeah, but we opened it up for the opportunity for you to oppose it when we were dealing with item 13.
Let me just say one thing, and then I'll sit down.
Sure.
How much money is this company that's going to run this system all night and all day, are we getting from them?
What I will do is I will have...
I know, nothing.
I will have Mr. Shannon Yalzey contact you and give you that information, if you like, I would be happy to do that for you, so at this time, we're on item number 14, anybody else wishing to speak against it? Okay, seeing no interest, I now declare that item closed, any rebuttals? Okay, seeing no interest, I will declare that one closed, at this point, I personally would like to make a motion, I mean, Mr. Tuttle knows, no one has been more outspoken about spending the business tax on entertainment than myself, and I believe Councilmember Cruzbaca, so I also would like to see that go into the general fund, because we do support these programs, we think they're important to our community, but I also believe that the business improvement tax has to, they has to be related to improving our businesses, and with that, I think I'll make a motion to bring it back and see how we can make that possible, so that's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Okay, with that, I, this item is passed, at this point, I would like to make a motion to have the report of officers, move them over to the next council meeting, so if Sam and anybody, is there any timeline on this that we need to report today? Anything pressing?
No, this can, this can be moved.
Okay, so for report of officers, I would like to give my colleagues the opportunity to be here present the next council meeting, so I would make a motion to move our report of officers 15 through 17 for our following council meeting, and that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, any objections? Okay, none, so moved, and with that, I want to thank the members of the community for coming over, and I make a motion to close.
No, Vice Mayor, there's something that's sort of time-sensitive, and I think Shannon, the CEO, is going to, in regards to SB 541 and some of the new Senate bills, and also a Senate bill that some of the cities are opposing, there will be a vote tomorrow at the Council of Government, but there's also a vote that's coming tomorrow to the Senate in the morning, and I believe unfortunately, there wasn't enough time to put this on the agenda, so I think it's very important that we oppose this bill, simply because it will be costing our taxpayers more money, the city of Glendora is looking at $1,400 a year more on taxes per property, so Shannon, would you like to give us the report on that?
Yes, thank you, the, many cities are asking us to oppose SB 231, it allows stormwater taxes to be considered as a sewer fee, and therefore, they would be exempt from Prop 218, Prop 218 would require voters to vote on any increase in tax, but if Senate Bill 231 is passed, then stormwater taxes could be levied without a vote of the people, and thus going around the intent of Prop 218, so if the city council would like, I can send a letter out tomorrow opposing SB 231.
I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter, I don't know if the other council members, I know that we, like I said, the Senate will be voting tomorrow, and this is something that's very important, because it is going to cost our taxpayers more money and more taxes.
I would second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, any objections? None, so moved, okay, thank you very much, at this time, we move to the Housing Authority Consent Calendar, I move to approve item one on Consent Calendar, Treasurer's Report, any objections?
I second the motion.
Okay, with that, so moved, any questions? Now we move to the Baldwin Park Finance Authority Consent Calendars, item one, Treasurer's Report, with that, I make a motion to approve Consent Calendar.
Second.
Okay, thank you with that, and with that, any objections?
No.
So moved, so at this point, we declare council meeting closed, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.